This is Tuesday, May 6th, September 1st. This is the Volunteed and Love People's Business Session. So, welcome tonight, I'll be with very little agenda for channeling attendance. We will start with Brokaw.
This is Dunbar.
Here.
This is Caesar.
Yes, here.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. White.
I have not heard from you, so I'm not sure if you can hear me. Please leave a text.
Uh, Mr. O'Brien.
I am here. Uh, so with that, would everyone please join me in the chair of the meeting? I am trying to... ........................................................................... Okay, so the next item is approval of the agenda. Everyone should have received the addendum to the agenda which was also posted to the district's webpage. In addition to the addendum, we're about to amend the addendum to add an executive session at the end of the meeting to, uh, to discuss the potential acquisitions of awards. And actually, sorry, so for those who have heard my texts, go up, Mr. White, he won't be joining us since the...
It is your election.
It's your election, yes. Uh, so with that, I'll adjourn the motion to accept the agenda in the addendum as amended.
Second.
On second.
Second.
Please, uh, please, discussion. And please call the water screen.
Uh, Ms. Caesar.
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes. Okay, we now move to the awards presentation report, which is, uh, this is the easiest presentation report I've ever seen in a year. There's, uh, two significant items. One, is the recognition of students or academic and extracurricular activities, uh, has a large crowd tonight, as well as the recognition of recipients of Olentangie Community Service Awards. So with that, I'll turn it over to Vice President Dunbar, and she will take it from there.
Tonight's meeting is a special one for us because it's the evening we as a board get to recognize students and staff members for their outstanding achievements in co-curricular, extracurricular, or athletic activities. We will also recognize our community service leaders, outstanding adults who have given back to Olentangie throughout the year. This year, we have more than a hundred students, coaches, and advisors to congratulate, including four middle school students who are finalists in the National History Bee. Let's roll right away into the awards for the evening. As I announce each person's name, please walk up and receive your award and have your photo taken with Board President Kevin O'Brien and Superintendent Wade Lucas. These photos will be delivered to you through your school or by mail in the next few weeks. Let's talk about the National History Bee. The National History Bee honors are four middle school students, all from Olentangie Berkshire Middle School. The competition began when they took an online regional qualifying exam with 250 other students from Berkshire. The top students from that qualifying exam then competed against each other in a regional final. This was a buzzer competition coordinated by the National History Bee staff. Four of the Berkshire students made it through these finals, which makes them national qualifiers. They will now have an opportunity to be named national champion when they compete June 6 through 8 Atlanta. Congratulations and good luck in Atlanta to the following OBMS students. Siddhartha Mehta. And now, turning to our high school teams, groups, and individuals, we'll start with the visual arts. All of the following students were selected to display their work at the very prestigious Governor's Youth Art Exhibition. From Olentangie High School, Colin Mekadu. From Olentangie Liberty High School, Madison Miller. Four students from Olentangie Orange High School earned Silver Key Awards from the 2014 Central Ohio Regional Scholastic Art Awards. They are Braden Baker. And finally, in the art category, Olentangie Liberty High School's Starfath Shaw was an exhibitor in the 2013-14 National K-Pur-12 Ceramic Art Show. Music. The Board would like to congratulate Director Michelle Moss, representing the Olentangie High School Chamber Orchestra and Symphony, which both earned superior ratings at state competition. Let's also congratulate Jill Bixler, who led the Olentangie Liberty High School Chamber We would also like to recognize and congratulate the following Olentangie High School students for their musical achievements. Blake Easting, American String Teachers Association National Orchestra. Students from Olentangie Liberty High School should also be recognized for their musical accomplishments. The following students were members of the 2013-2014 Allstate Choir. Next, we're pleased to also recognize the Orange High School music students who achieved high honors. Yon Su Kim, Allstate Orchestra. Marissa Bynum, Allstate Choir. Madison Torrio, Allstate Choir. DECA. Due to this year's early graduation and the necessity of moving this award ceremony up to avoid missing our graduating seniors, we've run into an unavoidable scheduling conflict with our DECA students. Many of our DECA competitors are in Atlanta tonight, competing at the National Career Development Conference. Some DECA award recipients are present, however, so we'll read each DECA student's name as usual. DECA programs in Olentangie District have always been strong and very competitive. DECA students have been leaders at the state and national level in DECA competition, as well as in fundraising for the MDA, Honor Flight, Wounded Warrior Project, the Make-A-Wish Foundation, and others. As a first this year, the district is proud to claim their first-ever state DECA officer. She is Stephanie Elkins from Olentangie Orange High School, who is not here because she is an act. All three high schools actively participated in the DECA marketing program this year and continue the tradition of exceptional involvement in DECA. Congratulations to the following advisors and DECA groups for outstanding performance in competition. Eric Wells, Olentangie High School. Mike Reese, Liberty High School. Crystal Shanahan, Orange High School. The Olentangie Orange High School DECA program is also being recognized for Gold Store Recertification. Again, all three of these are in Atlanta. The following Olentangie High School students are being recognized as national qualifiers at the DECA 2014 International Career Development Conference. Sarah Arango. Ali Benon. Troy Buncher. Julia Bova. Erin Fraser. Hannah Gifford. John Greco. Claire Hardisty. Jonathan Jansen. Alexandra McCafferty. Victoria Minster. Annie Moore. Sarah Olivieri. Amanda Satian. Alexandra Spence. Jessica Tolan. National DECA qualifiers from Olentangie Orange High School are Stephanie Elkins. Ryan Borre. Bethany Kurtz. Connor Niles. Madison Niles. Hannah Cole. Christian Ponzek. Maxwell Routsen. Sahil Shah. And Priya Sharma. From Olentangie Liberty High School, these students also were national DECA qualifiers. Joel Anayna. Lila Akaya. Brenda Bott. Cole Bisson. Bethany Kaye. Rachel Carline. Cameron Latney. Ashley Maker. Nathan Meeke. Megan Parton. John Schweitzer. Lucas Falco. Alyssa Watts. Claire Wild. Trinity Wild. That's quite a list, let's give that full description. Another area in which our high schools excel is journalism. This year, the news magazine and yearbook from two of our schools earned state honors. We'd like to have the advisors at those schools accept the following awards on behalf of their student journalists. Jessica Rhodes from Olentangie High School won Ohio Scholastic Media Association First Place Yearbook for the Golden Arrow and OSMA Second Place for News Magazine The Courier. Carrie Phillips from Orange High School, First Place OSMA for their news magazine, The Courier, and OSMA First Place Yearbook for the Bronze Bayonet. Accepting the award for Carrie Phillips tonight is the Bronze Bayonet's junior editor, Joining me in congratulating these Olentangie High School student journalists for earning a superior rating at the Ohio Scholastic Media Association Contest this past year. And Erin Fraser. Also receiving a superior rating at the Ohio Scholastic Media Association Contest, Orange High School journalist, Mackenzie Brunki. In addition, four student journalists from Orange High School received the OCC Academic League James L. McCann Excellence in Journalism Award. The Board is pleased to honor Ellen Bardash. Hopefully, Mackenzie Brunki did not go too far. Stephanie Elkins. Athletics. We now turn to recognize our outstanding student athletes. Many students have received individual honors in their sport. The Board wishes to congratulate the following students from Olentangie High School who are state swimming qualifiers. Also from Olentangie High School are several state-level athletic awards. Colleen McHugh, State Diamond Qualifier. Anna Tantire, State Gymnastics Qualifier. Cody Pollard, State Wrestling Qualifier. Chris Crum, State Wrestling Qualifier. Nathan Hall, Sixth Place, State Wrestling Champion. Many student athletes at Liberty High School earned state-level honors in their sport. Olivia Ball, State Diamond Champion. Cameron Venture, Runner-Up, State Diamond Champion. Luke Callahan, Second Team, Allstate Football. Michael Shiner, State Qualifier for Miss Oregon. Giuseppe Penzone, State Wrestling Qualifier. Jonathan Furness, State Wrestling Qualifier. Trey Preenier, State Wrestling Qualifier. Christopher Bergameska, First Team, All-Capitol Hockey Conference and participant, State Senior All-Star Game. Donald Deep, Second Team, Allstate Soccer. Natalie Flainhug, Second Team, Allstate Soccer. Claire Wild, State Qualifier, Cross Country. Andrew Johnston, All-Ohio Cross Country and Tenth Place, State Cross Country. These Liberty High School student athletes were state swimming qualifiers. Bailey Braun, State Swimming Qualifier. Samantha Dawson, State Swimming Qualifier. Thomas Dawson, State Swimming Qualifier. Riley Haas, State Swimming Qualifier. Justine Kennon, State Swimming Qualifier. Caroline Reiki, State Swimming Qualifier. Turner Sade, State Swimming Qualifier. Nicholas Tracewell, State Swimming Qualifier. And finally, from Orange High School, we have sisters who are state doubles tennis And we have a state swimming qualifier, Alyssa Haydit. All three high schools boasted a championship-winning team this year. Some teams are not yet finished competing at this stage. Awards for those teams may be given at the June 26th conference meeting. Coach Michelle Mynna led the Olentangie High School Girls Volleyball Team to an OCC Championship. Coach Steve Dyke was at the helm when both the Olentangie High School Boys and Girls Swimming Teams were named OCC Champions. Undercoach Jim Green, both the Olentangie High School Boys and Girls Bowling Teams earned the title Conference Champions. Coach Jared Mills of the Liberty High School Boys Cross Country Team led his team to be named 2013-14 State Qualifiers. Coach Rick Collins had a very successful season with the Liberty High School Boys Soccer Team. The boys were district and regional champions and 2013-14 state semifinals. Orange High School Girls Soccer Coach Jennifer Odorex led her team to an OCC Championship. Congratulations to the many outstanding students, teams, groups, coaches, and advisors. On behalf of the Board, I'd like to thank you all for coming tonight and hope you know that we're very proud of your accomplishments. Now for the Community Service Awards. The Olentangie Board of Education established the Community Service Awards in 1986 to honor residents of the community who have had a major impact on our children's education through their volunteer efforts and significant monetary or in-kind donations. There's a list of those award winners and some of the direct comments made by those who nominated them. Leslie Armstrong, nominated by Cheshire Elementary School. Leslie gives tirelessly to Cheshire Elementary and her daughter's Girl Scout troop. She's a joy to work with and always has a smile and a fun story. Bonnie Borgett, nominated by Scioto Ridge Elementary School. Bonnie Borgett has been involved with Girl Scouts for many years. She's held two of the most challenging volunteer positions in Girl Scouts. She's been a troop leader for 13 years and is the Service Unit Registrar 10 years. Her current troop has been at or near the highest Girl Scout enrollment for many years. We thank Bonnie for her service to the lives of many young ladies. Scott and Vicky Claußen, nominated by Olentangie Berkshire Middle School. The Clausons have gone above and beyond to support our school community. They donate priceless time helping in our athletic programs as well as our academic programs. We appreciate their positive attitude and endless energy for our Sentinels. We appreciate their positive attitude and endless energy for our sentinels. Dawn Decker, nominated by Olentangie Meadows Elementary School. Dawn has served as our PTO president for the past year. She's put in countless hours to raise money and bring in programs to enrich the education of the students at OMS. She works tirelessly and without pay. She's been instrumental in helping to bring new technology to OMS. Carrie Dunbar, nominated by Tyler Run Elementary School. Carrie's been our PTO treasurer for the past two years but has been an active member of our Tyler Run community since 2008. Carrie is very detailed and accurate in the record-keeping. This position requires many hours of dedication. Tyler Run has benefited enormously from Carrie's knowledge and professionalism. Matt Ellis from Music and Arts, nominated by Wyandotte Run Elementary School. Matt has been a wonderful help with all of our music needs. He stops in every week to see what he can do. He helps us with all of our instruments and sells us recorders, books, and other music at a deep discount. He also volunteers his time at some of our WRES events. Vesuda Garg, nominated by Liberty Tree Elementary School. Vesuda has been a part of the LTES community for five years. She's worked diligently in our school library, has been a member of our PTO, is a current member of the District Diversity Committee, but most importantly, Vesuda has been our bridge with cultural diversity at LTES. She's been a wonderful resource for the staff and recently spoke at a staff meeting about the need in culture and education. Her presentation was eye-opening and we are so grateful for her words of wisdom. We appreciate her efforts in building awareness and understanding of all cultures in our community. Candice Harmon, nominated by Olentangie Orange High School. Candy has volunteered on a daily basis at OOHS this year. She arrives prior to first period of her own workday and plays the piano for multiple a cappella groups during their class time. Candy is committed to assisting the students at Orange High School and giving over time and talents in order to better enhance the music education of our students. Her continued commitment to the students at OOHS is invaluable to our school. Stephanie and Philip Hawke, nominated by Wyandotte Run Elementary School. Mr. and Mrs. Hawke have been great supporters of WRES financially and by volunteering many hours doing things for the students and staff of Wyandotte Run. Mrs. Hawke has been a chairperson on WPRTO committees and has been a big help here at WRES. Lisa Hines, nominated by Olentangie Orange High School. Lisa Hines is a great help to the attendance and student services areas at OOHS. She cheerfully volunteers to cover lunchtimes for both offices and is always willing to jump in and assist where needed. She's enthusiastic and helpful and our time is greatly appreciated. Lisa is most deserving of being honored with a community service award. Dinah Adobonic, nominated by Wyandotte Run Elementary School. Dinah has been a fantastic volunteer in the Wyandotte Run building. She has been chairperson for the book fair for several years and has been the tutor for Wyandotte read in Wyandotte counts. She's also been a classroom volunteer for many years and is willing to do anything for WRES. Ty Cashmirey, nominated by Olentangie Liberty High School. Ty is a great supporter of athletics at OLHS and has started programs such as the halftime field kick at our home football games. He's even jumped in and helped us with ticket sales at events where the lines were quite backed up around the start of the event just because he could tell we needed to use the help. He's a friendly person and easy to get along with. Carolyn Lindell, nominated by Olentangie Orange High School. Carolyn Lindell contributes countless volunteer hours to OOHS. She's dedicated to assisting staff in the front office and making a difference. Mrs. Lindell is an essential part of the OOHS school community and we are most appreciative of her willingness to share her time and contributions. Susan Marston, nominated by Tyler Run Elementary School. Susan has been our PTO president for the past two years. Susan has five children who have attended TRAS and she has been actively involved since Moving with Community in 2009. Susan is always looking to see how PTO can best serve our students and staff. She's an incredible asset to our community. James Martinez, nominated by Olentangie Liberty Middle School. Mr. Martinez has supported the debate club both financially and in volunteering his time. The debate club is the largest club at OLMs and that is in part due to his efforts. OLMs is lucky to have such a wonderful and caring volunteer. Amy McIntosh, nominated by Arrowhead Elementary School. Amy has helped out at Arrowhead in so many ways. She's been on our PTO board for two years as secretary and she helps with many building events. She is often at Arrowhead helping in some way. Deborah McCain, nominated by Tyler Run Elementary School. Mrs. McCain has been president of the Tyler Run PTO for the past two years. She's worked endless hours to create incredible and fun PTO events. She also spearheaded the creation of the Tyler Run mascot, Tyler the Tiger. Steve Mullins, nominated by Olentangie Liberty High School. Steve Mullins has given countless hours as the Liberty Athletic Booster Organization president for the past two years. His dedication and commitment to making the experience of all of our student athletes a positive one has been greatly appreciated. Olentangie Liberty High School, Hyatt's Middle School, Liberty Middle School, and our entire athletic community are extremely grateful and fortunate to have had Steve Mullins in leadership. Bill and Nadine Myers, nominated by Scioto Ridge Elementary School. Bill and Nadine have been Boy Scout, Den, Pack troop leaders for over five years in the Powell area, which has served boys for many schools. They've organized many events for boys and families. Father-Son Cake Bake, Hightower Derby, Scout and Family Candy crossover ceremony. And I can testify, as their neighbor, that I've gotten lots of phone calls from them. One scout says, "I've learned so much from Mr. and Mrs. Myers in scouting. They make it so fun. It's things I'd need when I grow up." Jennifer Assebacher, nominated by Glen Oak Elementary School. Jennifer has served on the Glen Oak PTO Executive Board and most recently this year served as our PTO president. She's done a great job supervising the actions of the organization and designing new opportunities for students. She's a very positive leader for our school and a great role model for our students. Amy and Neil Patel, nominated by Wyandotte Run Elementary School. The Patels are great supporters of Wyandotte Run and have made substantial financial contributions to our Wyandotte Run PTO projects. Mrs. Patel has also been a classroom volunteer for the past two years. Nadine Palmer, nominated by Olentangie Hyatt's Elementary School. Mrs. Palmer has been very supportive of the staff at Hyatt's. She often organizes and runs our parent-teacher conference dinners. She's friendly, positive, and always asks if she will do anything to support the staff and students at Hyatt's. Angela Schimmell, nominated by Glen Oak Elementary School. Angela's been chair of the Glen Oak Diamond Show for four years. She shared her passion with our students and their families. She organizes the event and prioritizes it with screenings, dress rehearsal, and hosting in a high school auditorium to allow for students to perform on the big stage. Jennifer Slago, nominated by Wyandotte Run Elementary School. Jennifer is co-president of Wyandotte Run this year and has provided many hours of service to the students and staff. She tutors our students in math and works on the many projects that PTO is providing to Wyandotte Run. She's chaired fundraising events and has worked with different grade levels on fitness events. Hannah Smilges, nominated by Wyandotte Run Elementary School. Hannah is a seventh-grade student at Olentangie Liberty Middle School. Hannah volunteers her time after she gets out of school three times a week to work with a group of our students. She does this out of the goodness of her heart, not for accolades. The teachers with whom she works with say how much of a benefit she is for those students. It would be wonderful to reward her for her time, even though she would never expect it. Kathy Song, nominated by Olentangie Liberty Middle School. Kathy volunteers her time, provides food, and created t-shirts for Liberty Middle School's debate club. The club's inception is due to her efforts and donation of time and money. Betsy Stewart, nominated by Freedom Trail Elementary School. Mrs. Stewart is an original founding member of the Freedom Trail Elementary PTO. She's currently a PTO co-president at Freedom Trail. Betsy is an extremely hard worker and a wonderful child advocate. Mrs. Stewart is a fantastic role model for all of Olentangie local schools. Steven Swisher, nominated by Olentangie Orange High School. Steve has worked tireless hours assisting with OOAV, most notably the girls' soccer program. His leadership and direction within the booster club has been tremendous asset throughout the years. His vision and desire to always assist Orange High School, the community, and most notably, our students, makes Steve a great choice for the community service award. Brittany Crowman, nominated by Oak Creek Elementary School. Brittany is currently OCES PTO president and is very involved in school functions. We see her on a daily basis, sometimes more than once. Brittany's been involved in the PTO since she has come to Oak Creek and helps out in her three children's classrooms whenever she can. She's always upbeat and is good advocate for Oak Creek and Olentangie schools. Jeff Tuller from Tuller Landscaping, nominated by Wyandotte Run Elementary School. Mr. Tuller has helped Wyandotte Run Elementary on two different occasions by providing a commemorative tree at no charge to honor students who have passed away. He picked out the trees, delivered the trees, and plowed them. All was done at a substantial discount. Wyandotte Run is lucky to have such a generous man helping us. Anne Vanzwyten, nominated by Olentangie Liberty Middle School. Mrs. Vanzwyten has donated time and resources to Liberty Middle School Drama Club. She's worked to bring parents together to support theater activities. Mrs. Vanzwyten was responsible for securing donations to upgrade the sound system for theater events. Karen Waltemeyer, nominated by Olentangie Liberty High School... Olentangie High School, sorry. Keep her up here, this is a long one. OHS Principal Tom McDonald writes, "Karen Waltemeyer is truly a brave parent. To make the long story short, one of our teachers had a serious medical emergency during parent-teacher conferences this winter. After we called 911 and before the squad showed up, one of our secretaries made an announcement asking if we had any doctors or nurses in the building. Mrs. Waltemeyer just happened to be at OHS for a sports meeting for one of our children who currently attends Shinnan Middle School. She immediately caught the attention of a member of OHS staff and when she was told about the situation, all she asked was, 'Where's the nearest staircase?'" To get to her, we went on the second floor where she could help this person. Mrs. Waltemeyer sprinted upstairs and was very helpful until the paramedics arrived. As if this was not enough, she also happened to be a nurse at Riverside Hospital where they were taking our staff member. She followed the squad to help with the transition. She gave us her name and phone number before she left and then called us later in the evening to give us an update. Mrs. Waltemeyer's quick response and willingness to go above and beyond for someone she had never met have made her a member of our Olentangie brave family for forever." Let's give a big round of applause to all our members. You're all welcome to stay. Thank you for coming. Have a wonderful evening.
Mr. President, I just want to say that if you see me typing up here, it's because we have legislation that's breaking at the State House and I'm in contact with our state representative. We're trying to land some stuff up with the administration of Olentangie, so I'm not even reviewing, but I need to visit us and these are... You can request these if you want to see them because they're public records.
This feels like season, right? Alright.
Want to hear cheers?
Is this his? Oh, okay, come on up towards the front. I even had the spotlight over here, that's... Okay. I'm gonna make this short and sweet. As you all know, that's often a challenge for me, but this past month and today, we are celebrating several different staff appreciation weeks or days, as you can see on the PowerPoint. We have Administrative Professionals Week, we have Teacher Appreciation Week. Today is Teacher Appreciation Day. I believe it's tomorrow, it's Nurses, or sometime this week. Today is also Nurses. I wish I had a whole room full of staff members to say this to, but hopefully they can hear me when I say this. Hopefully they tune into the audio. But we are extremely fortunate here in Olentangie to have the staff that we do. We're very appreciative of all the efforts they put forth. As you know, we are high achieving and we're high achieving because of the fact that we have staff members that go above and beyond the call of duty, so we want to give a shout-out, as they say, to those individuals. I do have a letter that I received that I do want to read. Keep in mind, we have almost 2,000 employees, so I could get this letter on just about any employee that we have, but we do have one for Orange Middle School. It's addressed to Mr. Cunningham, the principal, and his team, his staff. It's from a parent. I'm not going to tell you who the parent is, I'm not going to tell you who the student is, but I do want to read the letter. It says, "I need to say thank you to you, your staff, and students for the great gift you gave last week to both my daughter and myself." Now keep in mind, I have edited this letter, but I think it really tells the work that all of our staff members do. "The simple fact that fellow students even considered nominating my daughter since the month is truly amazing. She's included in Mr. Bratton's science class and has truly loved being a part of that community. Last Thursday, though, takes my breath away and brings tears to my eyes every..." Last Thursday, though, takes my breath away and brings tears to my eyes every time I think about the recognition. It speaks so highly of the students at Orange Middle School. As my daughter was up on stage being recognized and smiling from ear to ear, the students in the audience held up handmade posters with my daughter's name and positive comments in regard to her. There were numerous posters. When you have children, a parent's dream is for their child to be accepted by peers. The love and compassion that was displayed during the brief recognition will last a lifetime for both me and my daughter. The students' actions are truly a reflection of what a wonderful, nurturing school culture that is evident at Orange Middle School. We are so lucky to be a part of this family. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for creating a memory that will last a lifetime." Now, again, we want to thank this individual for writing this letter, but we can also say that letter could have gone to all nineteen hundred or so staff members that we had in the school system. Very proud of the efforts, and that's just a reflection of what our parents and students think. Other things, I think you saw this one, and I'm kind of peeking around the corner, as they say, so that I can see the PowerPoint, but I don't have to peek too far to talk about this one. It's US News and World Report. We, as you can see, we did very well. Central Ohio, for example, in the US News and World Report, ratings of public high schools in the United States. Liberty was number one, Olentangie was number two, and Orange was number four. Now, Randy was here, by the way. He brought that to our attention, of course. And we've also talked about the Washington Post, which was last month, I believe. And in that, Orange was number one, and it just so happened that we got the first verification of that than Todd Myers. So, to say that they're competitive would be an understatement. But again, as you can see statewide, Liberty's fifth in the state, Olentangie's seventh in the state, Orange ninth in the state. Those eligible for the ranking, by the way, is 115. Nationally, out of nineteen thousand four hundred high schools eligible for the ranking, Liberty was number 175, 181, and 208. Once again, I wish this theater was full because the fact that no one is here is not really a testament to what people think. I think it's a testament to the fact that they have put and feel very good about what you individuals and individuals left in here are doing with this school system, not to mention the fact of the staff members and how they do. So, it's a great, great honor. You'll hear more about this, I'm sure. And again, my only wish would be that we had a few others that were here to share this and see this and really understand the job that is done in this school system. Other good things, we do have the ability to track our college students. I know we've talked about this in our board meetings regarding remediation rates and how our students do. And if you follow this data, you know that when students nationally, when they enter college, which we're heading into graduation, usually right around thirty percent finish in four years. Well, in Olentangie, it's forty-six percent of the class of 2009, which again is five years ago. Up to seventy-five percent of those individuals are still enrolled in college. And again, if you remember when we approved the Central Ohio Compact, you know that the goal of the Central Ohio Compact is to have sixty percent of the population in this area to have an associate's degree. Well, seventy-five percent of the class of 2009 is either, has already graduated or is on track to graduate very soon, seventy-five percent. Now, of that class, by the way, I believe about eighty-five percent of that class went to college. Okay? The class of 2014, we are projecting anywhere from ninety to ninety-five percent of those individuals to go to college. So, five years from now, we'll have a class of fourteen up here, and it'll be very interesting in where they fall as far as how many actually finished in four years, how many finished in five years, how many are still seeking that degree. And I think that information is very helpful for everyone because I think if you took those numbers, the forty-six percent that's already finished, seventy-five percent still on track to finish, I think that we could put them up against anyone in Central Ohio and we would do very well.
I have one of those.
Pardon me?
I have one of those.
You have one, yes, you do, correct. Actually, she's already through and teaching. She just finished her first year on the job, as I said.
Oh, she goes through June, June 30.
Very good. Also, I think everyone here knows this, well, I know everyone here knows this because everyone that's here tonight will be there.
Well, Dave's got to go graduating.
No, no, it's next week.
Oh, good, you'll be there then.
Very good. And I think 1,051 graduates, Liberty begins at ten o'clock, Orange is at two, and Olentangie is at six. That's actually one week from this Saturday, believe it or not, May 17th. Probably the highlight of the school year. And I want to say to the four of you that are here tonight, I know you'll be there with me the whole time from eight in the morning to eight at night. And I do appreciate the fact that you put the school system high above in your priority list. And we truly do appreciate it because even though we don't know it or people don't say it because we have 1,051, our students love seeing you there. Because it sends a tremendous message to them about what you feel the importance of this school system is to you. I want to just thank you for being there, and I know that it'll be a long day, but I also know it'll be a happy day for all of us. Upcoming board meetings, we have the business meeting on Thursday, May 22nd at 6:30. We have the board retreat on Tuesday, June 17th. That's at Comstate, once again. You will be receiving survey questions soon to start framing that whole piece of what we want that retreat to look like. We'll also be taking input from our administrators. As you know, the whole goal of that retreat is to start setting goals for next year. Start looking at the direction from a strategic standpoint of the school district. And of course, from there, it filters right down to the administration, with filters down to the building level. And that's going to be a very important retreat, so we're looking forward to that day. Also, last but not least, we have a board business session on Thursday, June 26th, also. And that is my presentation for this evening. I would entertain any questions that the crowd would have. Pardon me? We have a teacher here on the board agenda? Is that Dr. Yuli out there? Yes, yeah, we're not hiring Dr. Yuli. We are hiring his daughter. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Is she in relation to the Drac Yuli?
She sure is.
That's what I was thinking.
And you were a graduate of what year?
2005.
In Liberty, Liberty High School. You've been to some of my coffee chats, isn't that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, we were talking about that. I think it's been like two years ago or so. Yeah. Well, good to see you. I'm glad you're here and we're glad you're with us.
She'll probably get hired, four-nothing.
Pardon me?
It'll probably be a four-nothing vote.
It will be a four-nothing vote, I can guarantee that. Alright, any other questions from the board?
Not a question but a request, as we prepare for the board retreat, because of technical difficulties. We should be sure that we step up with the heads of the committees. Having talked about earlier in the year, I think we should let voices heard at the retreat and get their input before we get too far down the road. I'll make sure that we include those.
Do you want, just so I can clarify that, do we want the heads of those committees at that retreat? Or we want to meet with the heads of those committees prior to that retreat? Or both?
I would say they meet previously with whichever administration rep and choose to lead that, and then have them also available at that meeting.
Okay. I think the original plan was to give them somewhat of a state of the schools report so that everyone's on the same page.
Yep.
And then we will invite them to that retreat on 17th.
Yes.
Very good. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Have anyone else begin, Mike?
Next agenda is participants, basic session, no general comments. Next slide of the, sorry, next agenda's section is the discussion items, section eight. The first discussion item is the intent to rehire retired teachers at Zaina Adams at Liberty Middle School. 2014-15 school year, I think Mr. Marsh.
Good evening, Dr. Lucas, Board of Education. This item is required by Higher Advice Code. Anytime we are considering possibly rehiring a retired teacher, there are several steps to comply with as part of the Higher Advice Code. This meeting is one of those. Zaina Adams, the teacher that will be retiring, would like to come back next year as a retired rehire. Specifically, she would be rehired part-time and support our dual enrollment program in the English area. And as always, when we do retire or rehire, of which we have very few in the district, there is a savings to the district in comparison if she did not retire, for instance. And for this particular part-time hire, that savings would be just over fourteen thousand dollars. And I always take the time to remind the board, again, this is something that we do rarely. Currently, this year, we have over eleven hundred teachers and there are just six retired rehired teachers out of that over eleven hundred. And next year, we've got a few of those retired rehired teachers that won't be back next year. So, we're anticipating having five retired rehired teachers next year, and the total number of teachers will be just about eleven hundred and seventy. So, again, very, very small percentage. But we do it when we feel like we have a need and we're getting great value in the person that we're able to bring back. Obviously, that's the case with Zaina being involved, doing enrollment. Take any questions you may have.
I just want to remind people that the teachers do not have to retire. They can continue teaching at their current rate. But when they do the retired rehire, first of all, we only do it to those teachers who our principals recommend that they should be done because of their great accomplishments in the classroom. And secondly, we do it so that it's a cost savings to the district, but we benefit from their years of classroom experience.
That's absolutely correct. We do it only in very few instances. And we make sure that they're getting great value and they're an outstanding teacher before we even consider that. That's the case here. This item will come back at the next board agenda. Again, because there's a very strict timeline that we have to comply with, that would be as an action item, I would anticipate being on the next board agenda. Thank you.
Any other discussion items? Next slide is item B, is the first reading of the May 2014 Five-Year Forecast. Just with your fifteen general fund letters.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas, for reminding me, it's National Teacher Day. Before I get home, or see you, I'm there getting my wife some. Thank you for reminding me. Tonight, we'll be talking about the May update of the Five-Year Forecast. As you know, twice a year, we're required to, the board is required to approve that. October and May of each year. This is an update as compared with October. I'll go over some of those changes throughout this presentation and make some notes in the summary. So, now with that, get started here. If you look back in October, 2013 forecast, you see projected uncovered unambances. Sorry if I walk around a little bit and try to sneak it on the corner here, but as you can see, at FY17, we had a very small cash balance of four hundred and thirteen thousand and nineteen dollars, which is not even a payroll, probably even less payable. So, where was this guy in the starting point, and what has changed since October? Some very positive variances going forward have helped that. What's changed in October 2013? Revenue has increased about three million for fiscal year 14, about 1.82% as compared to October. One main driver, a couple of main drivers, other real estate valuations were about 1% higher compared to as we projected. When that's all 1% higher, it's about a mission of five hundred thousand. Plus, collections are slightly higher at this point in the year, through first half collections. Hopefully, that collection split will maintain as it has history and continue to be up for this time of year, tax year. Additionally, eight items, state funding for preschool special education. This is something I brought up when I went over the February financials. That was an item back in October when we were doing the forecast, about a million dollars, that we had no estimates from ODE on what that amount would be. Previously, those monies came as unit funding to the ESC, which just offset some of those, we purchased our preschool services from the ESC and that money was offset some of those expenses. Now, as part of the state foundation, it's not part of the formula, but below the formula, is this preschool special education. Now, what used to be based off of unit funding is now on more of a per pupil funding. Like I said, if you look back in SFPR from ODE back in October, there was no estimates at that time. We just actually started receiving that money in February. So, that has been factored into this forecast and has been factored as we continue to receive those monies at that level throughout the rest of the forecast. And one thing that I brought previously too, back in November, is a refund of fees from the county auditor. That was about 1.8 million. That was for the real estate assessment fees from the county auditor refunded. That's where there's too much of a balance within that fund, which the county auditor charges as part of the collection, the assessment and collection of property taxes from all the jurisdictions. When that gets, balance gets too high, they're required to refund, refund it to us in November. That, of course, will be in our October forecast. The last time that was done is 2006, so that is a one-time item. So, that will never be carried forward. I'm assuming we'll get that refund at some point, but the estimate that is, can't remember that. Revenue risk assessments, real estate taxes, new construction and reappraisal. We have a new construction over the five years here, and approximately two percent in a year. I think it's 2.4% as you go out in the farther forecast. Reappraisal, we're currently in that cycle now, we'll be doing reappraisal with new values to come up for next tax year. We actually expect that to remain flat. Actually, if you look at the forecast with board revision filings and stuff, we actually expect that to be around a half percent for this year. So, reappraisal is essentially flat for this year, and in three years, we have two percent as reappraisal. Nothing too much, but hopefully, as we get going forward here, I know housing has picked up some, but if that continues, we'll definitely reflect that in new construction and any housing values that we see for reappraisal will reflect that in future forecasts. Foundation revenue, three-state budgets affect this forecast. We have small growth projected beyond the current state budget. Currently, when I talk about the small growth projected beyond the current state budget, currently, we get about 8.2 million dollars from the formula funding. We're supposed to be getting 42 million, approximately, but the state instituted gain caps for this year, six and a quarter percent, and ten and a half percent for next year. And then that's by any budget we're coming after that. We have projected five percent in that growth cap. We have projected five percent in that growth cap. Assuming the formula stays, I would assume it will change the formula in itself, except maybe some certain factors that the government is, is fault. But with that, we have gain cap growth of five percent. I know Representative Warner has introduced that relief House Bill two twenty-eight to try to get some additional funding, where he would set a minimum funding at a thousand dollars per people, or approximately about four fifty right now. That way, it had over nine million dollars in revenue. We have, I believe, one testimony has already been heard on that particular bill. Of course, a testimony given for that. I'm not sure if we'll get another hearing. He, I believe, Dr. Lucas, a couple of weeks ago, he said he thought he'd get another hearing, maybe sometime in May, maybe potentially?
Yes.
So hopefully, at that time, so if anybody's listening out there, be willing to help us out, we'll really give a written testimony and be able to say for that particular, another hearing service, so we get additional funding. While that doesn't get us to where we think we should be at forty-two million, that is a nice increase for us. One of the things that we have, or some revisions of that particular bill that we've recommended is, he did have some growth in there, but it did yield three percent in enrollment growth. Well, I believe we probably would hit it in fiscal year sixteen, we might hit it in fiscal year seventeen. So we recommend that may change. We also recommend that it not only be a thousand, but be a thousand eight, approximately a thousand eighty-nine dollars, which is our charter non-public, or some people might, out there call it auxiliary schools. If you think about the local area, Village Academy, we probably have one, St. Bridges or in Dublin, St. Mike's. Typically, your Catholic schools are considered auxiliary schools. They get a thousand eighty-nine dollars per pupil. So they get even more than us with public schools, which are four hundred and fifty. So our recommendation for that was, if the change in that bill would give at least a thousand eighty-nine, so that gets us a little closer to almost additional eleven million dollars per pupil. So hopefully, that momentum gets pushed forward and we'll see some additional state revenue. Like I said, three state budgets affect this forecast, not only the current budget that we're in, and then the state buying budget for sixteen and seventeen, and then another one that would start in fiscal year eighteen. Any questions? As you can see, we, our revenue is, we're locally controlled. Unfortunately, I talked about the state budget, so we're supposed to be getting four-two million dollars and instead, we're getting eight with growth caps. So as, as you can see, we're predominantly relying upon our local taxpayers. Nice thing about real estate taxes is when we pay them to the county auditor, they come back to us as the district line fees that they take out doing that. But other than that, the money comes back to us, unlike your state income tax dollars, which you get to the state, goes everywhere else, I believe, FY thirteen cup report, still has us about four cents for every dollar that our residents pay in state income tax dollars coming back to this district. Hence, unfortunately, we have to be on the ballot more frequently than some others. As you can see, like I said, seventy percent's real estate control. The other ten, another big item is the ten percent, and that would be for all other revenues. That's predominantly TIF revenue, which is essentially real estate monies that we were required, required of all other revenues. That actually was slightly down this year as over projections. That was due to about a million dollar refunds for the players' tips. We didn't anticipate that amount of refunds going forward, so that has been, of course, factored into the forecast. And unrestricted grants engaged, that's about?
Three percent.
As you can see, the state income tax dollars are going somewhere else and not back to this district. Just another chart demonstrated, and we talked about state revenue, that is just foundation revenue. Technically, the property tax allocation, which is homestead and lowback and the state monies, that is included in this charge, the charge this and that is real estate revenue. Just showing how the spares as well, that's when it, well, it's a flat over time. Unfortunately, they go back to work, we skip additional real estate revenue. Just one thing to point out too, with homestead and lowback, something to keep in mind for future additional duties, that twelve and a half percent of home state lowback will not be references on any of the additional duties, that would be collected after. Expenditure summary points. Expenditures decreased over, as we projected, October two thousand thirteen, at one point nine million.
That is one point one eight percent.
One million of that is through personal services, primarily due to attrition savings. We had estimated in the fall, we were low on those, we hired new state attrition, that is either from teachers leaving the district and replacing them lower on the salary schedule or not replacing them. Purchase services increased about seven, eight hundred thousand as compared with the fall forecast. Essentially, that was utility expenses projected below that. I know some of that is due to some energy conservation measures, additional measures that we've taken out this year. I believe Jeff Gordon will be, this program will be designing. We don't do it for maybe the second organ in EMA or maybe in June to talk about similar energy, new additional energy savings issues. Too fast and true. Expenditure risk assessments, things that could affect going forward. No new buildings in this forecast. And as you know, in two thousand and eleven, we passed a bond issue along the Capulet for the sixteenth elementary. As a standard and helping moment, there is no plans on, at least in this forecast, on building that forecast. So no staffing, no utilities, anything else that would factor in this forecast for fiscal year, fiscal year eighteen for that elementary or any of the new buildings. Driving, some driving factors of expenses, and it is really a driving factor on revenues too, if we're getting new state funding, like we showed you, but is enrollment projections. I'll talk about some of the enrollment projections, how that affects some of our staffing levels in the next few slides. Current union negotiation, uh, contract negotiations. Currently, our unions agreements go through the end of fiscal year fifteen. So those will be, have to be factored in into future forecasts at that point. That's something to keep in mind. And, but as always, insurance expense is a big driver of this forecast. Not only before the CARE Act, but just trend in general, we have about twelve percent factored in for trend increases. We're talking with Aon Qube, a broker, factored in throughout the forecast. That is our fastest growing one. Currently, as I mentioned before, we have an RFP out right now to, hopefully, we'll be at some, our increases won't be around twelve percent. We'll see going forward, we're currently fully insured. We will be examined as part of our RFP process, self-insured. So we do something before we care about the figures. One thing to mention, insurance expenses, the Cadillac tax, people are talking about the Cadillac tax. That doesn't take effect until two thousand and eighteen. We haven't factored that in this forecast, but in, is it your second? With twelve percent increases as we projected going out, that, that liability would be three point six million dollars in fiscal year eighteen. What we don't know at this point, and I talked to Aon Qube in the day about it, is, is how would that be charged back? Would be fully, the way it works currently in the Florida CARE Act, where it states that if we're fully insured, and we are right now, the carrier would pay that, some excise tax is what they call, or the Cadillac tax. Of course, I'm assuming they would pass that expense on to us, or if we're self-insured, we would then have to pay that expense. At what point that expense would be incurred or have to be paid is, hasn't been, according to Aon, hasn't been read into regulation yet. So I don't know, for example, if we're fully insured, if those would be passed on as premium as part of the premium increase potentially in fiscal year eighteen or if it's hit in fiscal year nineteen. So that hasn't been factored into this forecast. One thing I want to point out through this whole forecast too, it is kind of the process too. You do have the finance and audit committee that we sit down with and go over the forecast with the assumptions through the notes in the forecast itself. We met on April twenty-first. We had very lively discussion on the factors that they talk about, was this insurance expense? A lot of can't talk too much about negotiations. That's something that we have to examine as part of that process. So that's one thing that they, you know, with the finance and audit committee, they just don't let us pass through. I know we had, after going through the meeting, Mark, Mark Ray's still here, it's, I haven't seen him, it was a very lively discussion. Dave can attest to that, that he was there at the meeting, really pushing us on, you know, some of the assumptions that we can make sure that we're sure and we feel good about that, or what this forecast is telling us.
But Mr. Colonel, the Cadillac tax, you're only charged it if we don't make changes to the current plan, because not all planes will be subject to that, it's just maybe it's, but in a certain, you say?
What the plan is on, what?
Benefit level.
Yeah, what the plan is on that we currently have, which is anytime you do a forecast with what information we've done now, is that plan is on and with those projected increases, that's, of course, anytime you get any lower than, you know, increases in that, we potentially won't pay it. Another thing with Cadillac taxes, a lot of the support for CARE Act stuff has been delayed. Some of those measures, some of those measures could be tweaked or changed, those limits could be changed at some point, but you can't count on that anymore.
Right.
So I think something definitely to examine going forward is, is our plans to help in the forecast.
But if things stay the same as they are now, would you ask to make changes in order to avoid that Cadillac tax, not just for this whole district, but because our employees share that the expenses pay as well?
Expenditures, what, what drives our expenditures, as many times as I've said, we are service industry, approximately. Eighty-five percent, I would say, is eighty-five percent of our expenses, our personal services, which is your salary, which is at any retirement conditions. So anytime we're going to change or something, that's where the other areas, you know, that should be made over time, those are more than all hanging fruit per state. But anytime you have any impact on expenses, it has to come with people, because we are a service industry. Teachers out here, they're out there, they're teaching their children. Talk about enrollment. You know, some of those charts were, you know, I think I believe in that chart, I talked about it. Fiscal year nine, I talked about how we remained about similarly flat as far as state funding's Yet, since fiscal year nine, we've grown from approximately thirteen thousand students to, at the end of this five-year forecast, an eighteen to twenty thousand. So, but yet, our revenue, state revenue has remained relatively flat. So anyways, enrollment trends. Enrollment is, you know, drives, we are a service industry, so drives the staffing that we have. Here's some of our expenditure drivers currently. As Mr. Marsh mentioned, next year, we should be around eleven seventy in certified teachers. And I said certified teachers, that would be anybody including guidance, consult, international specialists, anybody certified. Our currently, per pupil, I mean, well, it's around sixteen here. Some future slides, I'll show how that has changed over time and has resulted in saving to the district. As you can see, we're at sixteen point zero five next year. Dips slightly back down over the next couple of years, and that's due to some additional international specialists. Mr. Anderson has detailed some very means in special education students, higher, higher, higher needs of some of those students for additional staffing. It drives that, for pupil demands. Before, we continue to try to push that back up. As you remember, the additional staff, melanomas, last quarter, we talked about giving, and one is in additional staffing. So that will be balanced out. We review that every fall, August and then come before we get into September, before we get into the actual forecast, for the following years. For this next year, we very do that this fall. So that would be, I don't know, discussed at that point, going forward, that's how we see things at the head screen. Currently, new staffing, new enrollment growth is around twenty-four, we're ready to initiate twenty-four students. Pupils teacher ratio, back in two thousand and eleven, we were about fifteen point three four. As you can see, we've pushed that back up with, and around sixteen oh five from next year, we did down fifteen million in fiscal year eighteen. But what it has done is our performance in this board has continued to rise over time. So we haven't seen a slip in performance, even though class size is mainly growing over time. Really, back in October of ten, which had been forecast before in the May two thousand and eleven, at that point, we were at about fifteen point two six at fiscal year eleven, and all the way down to fourteen point eight six in fiscal year fifteen. And now, we're up to, with this forecast, which is a red line on top, we're about sixteen point three five. That's almost over, we won't have to be, or one F T per pupil ratio. That would be approximately, we would have a little over a hundred more teachers in fiscal year fifteen, if we would continue with the trend that we had in October two thousand and ten. Key expenditure drivers, this is a graph, will show October of eleven, would have been the last forecast before the current negotiated agreements, negotiated improved, those were approved in late in May, excitingly, in May of two thousand and twelve. As you can see, while it is a big driver and continues to go up, we still realize those savings from thirteen through fifteen is, for those three years, which we once negotiated agreements, it's just like in fifteen, we still have savings around thirteen million. We'll have to negotiate a new agreement after fifteen. If you go through sixteen, just with current trends, I think our increases are around seventeen million. So, or savings, I'm sorry, seventeen million over those four years. Just one other thing to point out too, staffing and personal services. If you look back with the October eleven forecast and compare it for thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, we have about a twenty million dollar savings after that, those are the changes. As you compare it, personal services from October eleven to, to now in the fourteen As you can see, revenues versus expenditures, we slightly have more revenues than expenditures. We started to see what I like to call the run rate, which is not unusual for districts that ourselves have to go to builders for operating units. As you can see, as you farmed it out, it's a levy cycle, the current levy. Last, the greater that spares become, especially with the growth that we're still getting in this district. Where are we at now? In May two thousand and fourteen, I mentioned we were about four hundred and seven thousand in October. Now, with our positive variances that are then factored in, like the one-time stuff, but others are factored in, but going forward, some of those savings uh, some of those savings as far as, uh, personal services, some of the revenue growth, um, have a balance of about thirteen million, uh, after incomparables, so, um, one month outward, cash balance is close to sixteen million, um, for fiscal year seventeen, uh, if foreign farmers, we guard it, so, um, so that would be, recommendation usually to go to handle levy cycle would be, uh, one to two months of cash balance, so. Any questions?
Can you go back to that, now, so you went over, Cheffusville, fiscal year eighteen, twenty-nine million dollars have changed, the voting.
It's that Martha mine, right?
Right.
I understand all the comments surprised me, really, we just had a time, yes, and I committee, it's a two and a half hour meeting. The reason it's two and a half hour meetings is because of quality of those people sitting in that committee, those volunteers, various, and depth and quality to which they've discussed items. They was went through, no, this is a summary, so the report itself is much longer, all the detailed items, and we committed, we went through every lineup, so whether it's revenue, whether it's expenditure, whether it's a small percentage item, whether it's art percentage item, all of those items got discussed, and with all the risk assessments, you know, looking at trends, uh, in my line, trends that we assume might happen, whether the dollars and percentages have changed, a lot of time was spent looking at what's happened, and, and what trends are we seeing, and, um, also, the group requested, oh, four or five, maybe, lineups, and we actually broken down into more lineups for more detail than, uh, that's good, and, and of course, that's what they're working on, so, if they want to, we can, future reports will have even more depth of the...
Most of those changes that we talked about in that meeting were reflected, there are no changes, uh, reflected, to break out some of those items.
Oh, right, right, they didn't change the numbers.
Yeah, they didn't change the numbers, but we did, when they made the change in the notes, to break, drill down per se for even further in those particular areas, so a reader looking at the financial statements, looking at the forecast, would see that, uh, was those major areas of that particular one.
It was, it was, it was an active conversation, good attendance, you know, it was really a great meeting. There might be more just mentioning, again, as you did bring up, that we made eleven, uh, levy bond didn't play on, which is sixteen, and as you said, it has not been built, that means no bonds have been issued, you know, interested in paying.
You are correct.
And everyone asked that one, insurance expense, we, you know, finalized last contract was created to eleven million dollars, saving, or, is our contract going to be attract, and she will say?
Yeah, uh, currently, as I mentioned before, when financial savings were attracted, it thirteen million, as you have compared at that point, so, you know, um, I would think, hopefully, nobody better at that point, uh, through, um, even through the RFP process this year, and it's, hopefully, it'll be some, it won't be at a twelve percent, uh, that we projected this time, but that's the trend at this point.
I have a question on the assumptions. Um, the, the assumption here for, um, possibility, which is school, oh, you have zero in here.
Yeah, thank you, um, uh, we do have, uh, one percent, but I guess that is in fact as a prior forecast, with a point five percent for fourteen and fifteen, uh, COLA or base, like I said, base increases, uh, this year, um, along with the two point seven percent step increases going out through sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, um, uh, we just have just the step increases in there of two point seven percent going up, we don't have any COLAs built in, um, I, I guess, me being new and stuff, that's kind of been the, the history and kind of the, the operating days, anything beyond the current negotiated agreements, we don't put in, have any, any COLA, um, that wasn't very lively discussion, Mr. Kinnon members, uh, from, um, the, the finance and audit committee, and where that is going forward, so, especially based off the current, uh, negotiating, uh, this one.
The impacts of all of these components is just very clear in this discussion, and progressively...
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. This is, this is, we don't say no. Thank you.
Hard to see.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the right one. Uh, next agenda items, uh, I think for just session two, action items.
There is another one.
So you have the assumptions on the action items, Dr. Lewis, you have the action items?
Yes, uh, Kate, you've been so patient, I, I would like to prove that, that I am out, uh, separately, which would be under A two of the amendment, and I would ask to present, uh, Catherine Yuli, uh, as an integrated math teacher, Liberty High School, effective August one, for a one-year contract, and as you know, she's been so kind and patient to, to wait, so, I'm gonna put her up.
Dr. Lewis, will that be just her, or everybody else under?
Yes, it'll be just her.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's always good when we can hire back one of our own.
No, no discussion.
And I'm a like one, too.
She's a like, that's right.
She can teach old and tangy history, that.
Mrs. Kinnon?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Dumbarton?
Yes.
See that? Now, I present Superintendent Action Items A through E for approval, S amended please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I just like to point out the graduating seniors, it's very exciting, it's always a great list to look at, and, um, I do look forward to shaking all those hands, we need food and pure, those are two things, please, that we make sure recover, but also looking forward to, um, um, Liberty Senior.
Red? Mrs. Dumbarton?
Yes.
Yeah, we need something, something on the agenda.
Yes. Uh, now, I continue to wish you good luck in the next session, we're going into the next session, instead of the potential purchase of land, we will not be taking any action items, right, along with...
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
We are now, uh, it's your little, do you have one?